I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution, which makes one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have one proclamation tonight. It is a Disability Employment Awareness Month proclamation. And we have Debbie Myers and Laura Coots from SKCAC Industries and Employment Services to accept, but we'll have Councilmember Lee read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Mayor. Whereas more than one in four U.S. adults, or 61 million Americans, have some type of disability according to Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And whereas October 2023 marks the 78th anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And whereas the purpose of National Disability Employment Awareness Month is to educate about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions, talent, and value of America's workers with disabilities. And whereas people with disability continue to experience disproportionate instances of unemployment, discrimination, poverty, and economic instability. And whereas workplaces welcoming the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of successfully building inclusive communities and strong economies. And whereas the city of Bellevue embraces the diversity, culture, and contributions of many residents with disabilities in our schools, government, workforce, and community by consistently and diligently working to make city people with disability, make city employment programs, services, and facilities accessible to people with disabilities. And whereas numerous organizations and city staff in Bellevue work with constituents and communities to develop programs and policies that encourage equity in hiring for people with disabilities. Now therefore, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the council, to hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 as Disability Employment Awareness Month in Bellevue, and urge all residents to support disability equity by recognizing the value and contribution of people with disabilities in our workplaces, and pledge to take steps throughout the year to recruit, hire, retain, develop, and advance individuals with disabilities to foster full participation and economic self-sufficiency. Sign, Lynn Robinson, Mayor, City of Bellevue.
Thank you. Debbie and Laura, are you here? Do you want to speak? Great.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson, and council members. It is an honor to accept the proclamation and acknowledge the city of Bellevue's commitment to disability employment and inclusive hiring practices for people with disabilities in your workforce. My name is Debbie Myers. I'm the Executive Director of SCAC Employment Services. For those who may not know, SCAC recently acquired Puget Sound Personnel, who has the longstanding relationship with the city of Bellevue. We are pleased to be able to continue the great work of PSP, now SCAC, partnering with you, developing opportunities, and providing job coach support to your supported employees. Your commitment to disability employment shines bright for your supported employees, who I'd like to acknowledge. Ben works in the Parks Department, helping to maintain the cleanliness of the Highland Center. Joseph is working in the Transportation Department, where he works on special projects and maintains the cleanliness of the kitchens and conference rooms. Jesse is working in HR, completing filing and scanning projects. And Joe works in both IT and Finance. He scrubs computers in IT and updates address changes for businesses. Joe is also a member of the Disability Advocacy Resource Team, DART, that meets on a monthly basis to discuss ways to create a more inclusive work environment. We look forward to your continued partnership and supporting opportunities for people with disabilities in your workforce. Tonight, for National Disabilities Employment Awareness Month, on behalf of SCAC's Board of Directors, staff, and participants, I would like to recognize the city of Bellevue,
Oh, thank you.
Mayor Robinson, the council, and city employees for your commitment to advancing access and equity in your workforce by presenting this plaque for you this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Can we come take a picture? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda amended to reorder the study session items so that the mid-bayonam budget update will be item 10A and the tourism promotion area will be item 10B.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, City Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This evening there are three pre-registered speakers. And so before I start calling names, I'll go over a few of the rules that the council has in place. Oral communications is for a period of no more than 30 minutes. And topics must relate to city of Bellevue government. Person speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first. And if time remains, persons not speaking on items on tonight's agenda will be called. In each category, the chair, the mayor in this case, can give preference to those who have not spoken to council within the last 60 days or who are going to be speaking on topics that will come in front of council in the next 60 days. Each speaker will be given three minutes, or up to three minutes, and only three speakers on one side of a particular topic will be able to be heard. In addition, I need to mention that in compliance with Washington State campaign laws regarding the use of public facilities during elections, no speaker may support or oppose a ballot measure or support or oppose a candidate for election, and that includes your own campaign. Any speaker who begins discussing topics of this nature will be asked to stop. And with that, I will call our first speaker, who is Mike Nickram. Apologies for the last name.
I'll answer that. That's okay. Hello, Mike Nickram here. I live over here in Newport Hills. I've been a builder here in the East Side area. Actually, our families build homes. Originally developed out the original university district right after they moved campus from downtown into Seattle. And last month, I noticed you all welcoming some new members of the ESI Commission. You caught about it. And I noticed the mayor asked a question, a really relevant question, as to whether or not we're going to be able to hit our 2030 climate goals. And the person you addressed could not answer that. And I'm here to tell you that that committee will never be able to figure that out. Now, we in the build community, we can get you there. We know how to get there. We're going there, and we've been there. I helped inaugurate, starting 25 years ago, the Green Build Program, the Master Builder Association. Office is sitting right over there on the other side of the freeway. Part of that, we're working with the NHB, now Association of Home Builders. And we have a new chair in the Climate Change Task Force, guy by the name of Ted Clifton. Now Ted's been building net zero homes for 10 years now. Ted knows how to do it. And the great thing about Mr. Clifton is anytime you want him to come down, he'd be more than happy to address you personally because he will come here in his ride that costs no net additional funds and it'll make no net impact to the environment. Ted's off-grid. Fortunately, he lives right here in Woodbee Island, and he's chairing this task force on a nationwide basis. We can get there, but you all need to stop hiring bureaucrats and start talking the industry. We know how to do this. Another example I can tell you is I have the technology. We have the technology right now to convert this existing city fleet to run on 10% to 30% less CO2 by this time next year. How do I know that? I've got a vehicle out in that parking lot I could show you. It's a one-ton commercial vehicle. That thing gets better fuel economy and makes less environmental impact than a Prius. And at the same time, that vehicle can carry five Priuses down to Portland and back, a trip I regularly make, for less than $20 worth of fuel. Not only can we get there and we can do this, we could actually save the taxpayers money. Industry is ready to go. The only thing standing between us and the 2030 goals, frankly, is this council right here. We need your help. I don't need to talk to any more bureaucrats. I need you all to talk to industry. We could do this right here, right now. One aspect is we build better homes than ever before, and yet it takes months and months for me to be able to get a building permit out of the city. Now, that's an abhorrent individual. We get it. We've got more carbon in our atmosphere than we've had for a million years. We know that. We get it. We need your help to get there. Please engage with industry. We're ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Alexi Melnick. Yep, let me call our next speaker, and then I'll call you again. Alex Zimmerman.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening. With Alex talking, I'm leaving.
Them Nazi pig who support Iranian Muslims and Palestinian terrorists.
Mr. Zimmerman, I'm going to ask you to leave. You cannot do any campaign talk here.
I don't talk about campaign.
Yes, you are. I'd like you to leave, please.
No, you are antisemitic. It's exactly what I want to see right now.
I'd like you to leave, please.
No, I don't talk about campaign.
You cannot do campaign talk in the council chambers.
I talk about Iranian Muslims and Palestinian terrorists.
You need to leave, Mr. Zimmerman.
I don't go. You need to arrest me. No, I don't. You will arrest me. Arrest me? No, I don't want to. No, I didn't do nothing wrong. I'm talking about... No, no, don't touch me. Arrest me. You have... Don't touch me.
We're going to take a five-minute recess, and I'll let you handle this. Thank you. Okay, I'll bring this back to order. Sorry for the delay. I think we have some more public communications.
Thank you, Mayor. We did have one additional speaker, who's Alexi Melnick. Mr. Melnick?
I'm sorry. I didn't know how the format works. Can you just give me... You mean I'm just very young?
Yes.
Okay. I'm very sorry. I haven't worked you just yet. I guess, start with just thank you for the work you do. Thank you for caring for us and caring for our town, our city. I guess for a long time, I read a book when I was very young, Urban Fiction. I didn't know if I could believe some of the things that were inside of it. Later on in life, I did find out some things, you know, on the subject when I was in Washington and Pittsburgh, not when I was in Hawaii, about people incarcerated in situations of slavery and abuses and horrors that couldn't possibly be cured. I wanted to believe it. Certainly, I fell into that state of denial that we all go into when you just simply can't believe things, that anybody would allow that kind of thing to happen. I did take some, without, you know, I wasn't paid to do it or anything like that, before I had any charges, before I was arrested for anything. And I did, for one time, find, get the opportunity to speak to a, what I thought was an honorable person. I cried very deeply and pleaded with him that he'd do his best in any way to influence that situation. I'm still not sure exactly what goes on. I think, honestly, I would like to do more research on it. I don't believe that it could possibly represent the country that I love so much. It's just simply not possible. We'd like to believe, I guess, that those people that are in situations where it is kind of an eye-for-an-eye Old Testament kind of justice, that they have deserved it, that in some way that they are... That they couldn't possibly have ever been falsely accused or some way been not responsible for the things they've done. I don't know. I really don't. I'd like to do more research on the subject. But I may not be able to. That day may never come. I was hoping very much that when the day came, I would be in my best state. I would be able to represent myself. But unfortunately, that's not the case, so I'm here today. I guess, certain people that I've encountered, I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure what they're trying to say. But they have thanked me, I guess. They told me not to keep going, not to keep fighting, not to find out, and not to try. Because I think that was, I don't know. I don't know. I'm not speculating. But anyway, I just want to close on a very positive note. I guess, I guess, you know, I sort of always feel this sense of impending death or whatever it is. And before that happens, I very much wanted to meet somebody. Well, I knew there was all along. Somebody who fought the good fight. It means so very much to me at last that I could meet them and tell them that even if they knew it was lost cause all along, even if there's nothing that could ever be done, just knowing that they were out there in the world.
Mr. Melnick, your time is up.
One last thing. I would ask them, please, never fight that fight again.
Alexi, thank you for coming down. We appreciate it.
There is some additional time left in oral communication, so at this point, I would ask if there's anyone else joining us here in council chambers or joining us online who would like to make comment to the council, please raise your hand. No additional hands, Mayor. I'll turn the meeting back to you.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize, Mayor. There is one last hand.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Kuntzer, can you hear me?
Thanks for seeing my hand.
Yes, thank you.
All right. I'm going to be brief in considering tonight's events. I want to start by saying thank you for the Disability Employment Act. Just as I told the King County Council, I'll say it here as well. I have multiple disabilities, PTSD, bad back, bad eye, bad eye, and Asperger's Syndrome. That's not an excuse for any misbehavior. That's an explanation. I just really, it took me many years to find a job I can do. And before I sit down to my job tonight, I want to just say from the bottom of my heart, thank you for your advocacy on this. We're all disabled people. We don't want to just play computer games. We want to make a difference in the world. We want to give back to our therapists and the cops and the firefighters and the paramedics and the military to put their lives on the line to protect our helpers so our helpers can help us. And I'm deeply grateful every day for our first responders and our helpers. As to the other event, which you all know I'm going to address, I'm just going to say this. I'm going to put it in email because I want to make sure you say these words, but I want to say to Mayor Robinson directly, thank you for standing up to Alex Zimmerman. His bigotry and hate is a threat to all of us. And when you stand up to evil, you stand up for everybody and everyone. You are what makes America great, not average people who sit back and do nothing. And I'm going to leave it at that because I'm a bit of an emotional mess. And I've been working on several things attached to them, as you know, through email. So thank you for your public service. Thank you for standing up to bullies. And thank you for standing up for disableds to be employed. God bless and protect the city of Bellevue. Thank you.
And with that, that brings us to the end of oral communications. I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So we have Diane Carlson, Deputy City Manager, with us tonight, and she has a report on two things.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. There are two items under the manager's report this evening. For the first, please join me in welcoming Dr. Kelly Arumaki, the new superintendent of the Bellevue School District. The city and the Bellevue School District coordinate on many aspects of our collective service to the community. And we are very pleased that Dr. Arumaki is here tonight to share his near-term goals for the district and to give a brief highlight on happenings and innovations taking place in the Bellevue schools. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Arumaki. Welcome.
Thank you so much. And I'm here with Janine Thorne, who's our Chief Communications Officer. We're happy to be here. Thank you for having us. Yeah, today, we're here mainly just to share a couple of celebrations with the community. But I am going to also share a few things that are kind of on the horizon for us in the Bellevue School District, and then end by talking about a couple of things that I'd love to see as partner around. So if you look at the picture up on the screen, that is a picture of Bellevue High School. We just celebrated Bellevue High School's 100th anniversary. And so it was an amazing celebration of an incredible school. And Bellevue High School, really, it captures the history of Bellevue itself, you know, being older than the city of Bellevue itself. But Bellevue School District and Bellevue are synonymous for excellence. I mean, both, when we talk about the excellence of the city of Bellevue, many people refer to the excellence of the school district as well. And we're very proud to continue that work. Let me see if I can get it to move here. These are just some other pictures. There's Mayor next to me up on the stage. But these are parents here who, I think, part of what makes the Bellevue School District so amazing is that we have amazing parents who are supportive of the school district and of the kids and do so much work to make everything go, run smoothly. Building on that kind of legacy of excellence, and the main reason we're here tonight is that we want to celebrate the fact that, coming out of the pandemic, all six of our high school programs have rated in the top 30 in the state in the U.S. News and World Reports that has just come out. And we're very, very proud of that. You can see the, kind of the logos of each of our schools. All are in the top 30. All of them rank in the top 7% in the state and are considered by U.S. News and World Reports the best in the country. And so we're very excited about that, and we have a banner at the end of our presentation to present to you. On top of that, we're also proud, in the Seattle Times, 70 of our students were recognized as being National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. And what that means is, on the PSAT exam, they ranked within the top 1% of the country. And so 70 students, that's more than any other district in the state of Washington. And it's something for us to be proud of, you know. I think there are people who have concerns about the state of public education. There are people who have concerns about education during the pandemic. And what I'll say is, coming out of the pandemic, the Bellevue School District is coming out extremely strong. We're very proud of the work that our kids and our educators are doing. On top of that, the best of Bellevue, I am proud to say, is still ahead of us. We are excited about the things that are coming over the next decade. The first thing I'll start with is, during the pandemic, we realized the importance of mental health supports for our kids. And so Bellevue School District has one of the most innovative approaches to mental health. We have over 20 social workers, psychologists, or counselors who specifically support kids around mental health. In addition to that, we are continuing to innovate in the area of CTE, so Career Technical Education. We have a horticulture program at Interlake High School where the kids are learning about environmental sustainability through the raising of plants and understanding the, how local species impact our environment differently than non-native species. We have a 300-level cybersecurity class that is offered at Newport High School. But on top of that, this year at Sememish High School, we have launched an aviation and aerospace course, and we're growing that into a program so that our students who want to learn to be pilots or learn to fly drones or want to go into aerospace engineering can take the classes that they need in high school so that they can launch into their careers or into their college studies afterwards. And so I got to fly, we have flight simulators for the kids. And it is very hard, I will have to say, to do that. But we're excited about the future for our kids, that they could have exposure to that in high school. On top of that, we are innovating in the area of language. And so we know that Bellevue is an international, global city, and we are launching our kids into careers that are global, whether they're working here or they're working abroad. And so we are expanding our offerings of world languages in our district. And so this fall, we started the state's very first Arabic language program, kindergarten first and second grade, which will grow all the way up through the end of elementary school. And then we are offering Arabic at middle and high school now. And so that all of our kids can participate, we have it being taught by a Bellevue School District teacher virtually from the building next to mine. And so kids can take it from any of our middle and high schools. And what's exciting is, we just had our first Hindi parent night to talk about bringing the Hindi language into Bellevue. And then this coming Thursday, we have an information night for our Korean families so that we can bring Korean. And so we're looking at starting Hindi and Korean this coming fall. But what we are trying to accomplish is that we have the opportunity for all of our kids to be bilingual, bilingual, and we want to offer the languages that reflect the diversity of this amazing community. We are also, as a school district, focusing on cultivating joy. So coming out of the pandemic, it has been very hard for families, for educators, for kids. There's been a lot of challenges around mental health and around isolation and things like that. And so we are choosing to cultivate and prioritize joy in our school district. And so you're going to hear lots of stories coming out from Bellevue about the different ways in which we are cultivating joy in our classrooms and in our schools. We're thankful for our partnership with the city. The Bellevue School District could not function if it wasn't for the support of the city of Bellevue. And so this is just some pictures of our collaboration around art and so many other ways that we partner with the city. But I want to end by sharing, and there's another, we just had an event with the Bellevue Schools Foundation over the weekend where city employees were just thrilled about our city council coming out and supporting us. But here are a few opportunities that I just wanted to share briefly that we can partner around, things that are really, really critical for the success of the Bellevue School District, not just for the city of Bellevue. The first one is, we have declining enrollment in Bellevue. And so if you look at birth rates in the state of Washington and in King County and within our district limits, they are going down across the board. And so just the number of kids that are coming into the school system are getting less and less. And so we have some work to do to kind of reset the number of schools that we have so that we can be, you know, successful into the future. But there are ways that we can partner with the district on addressing enrollment, making sure that we're being good with our resources, but also looking at ways that we can bring more students into the school district, which is related to the second topic to the right, which is around affordable housing. And so a lot of people are talking about affordable housing right now. But what I'll tell you is, from the perspective of the school district, this has to be one of our most important priorities into the future. Affordable housing is affecting the families that can afford to bring their kids into the school district. And so if we have housing that only the people with the most means can afford, that cuts out most of our families who have kindergarten-aged kids, first-grade kids. And so it affects enrollment. But the other way that affordable housing affects us is in who can live here and then work here in Bellevue. And so you may or may not be hearing about this, but we're canceling bus routes every single day. And it looks like we're going to be canceling routes all the way into December, January. And one of the main reasons is, is that we don't have people who live close by who want to work as bus drivers in our city. And so our bus drivers, many of them live an hour away, but they have to get there early in order to drive in the morning. And then they have two hours in the middle of the day that they have to figure out what to do. And then they drive the kids home in the afternoon. If we don't have housing that they can afford right here in the city, then they will choose to work in districts that are closer to their homes. And so if you look at, we have data that show any of our positions that are lower income, are bus drivers, are paraprofessionals, we simply are having a harder and harder time recruiting for those roles. And we're seeing the impact on our system. And it's something that we feel that we can accomplish and solve if we can work together as a community. The third is around strategic planning. So I showed you a couple of things around the exciting things that we're shooting for in the school district. But this year, we are embarking on a strategic planning process. And the focus is going to be, what is our dream for the city around education? What are we preparing our kids for in the future? And then what does the education system in Bellevue need to look like? Excellence has been a hallmark of the Bellevue School District, but we want to continue to be excellent by striving for innovations and preparing kids for the future. And then the last one with regards to transportation, we do think that there's opportunities tangibly to work together around improving transportation within the city. Some of that is around improving bike pathways. Some of it is around improving our partnership with Bellevue, with Metro King County. But we would love to figure out how to address better ways to get kids to and from school within the city of Bellevue. So those are just a few. But my closing thought is, we're proud of the work that we're doing in the Bellevue School District. We do believe that the best is yet to come, and we're excited about the partnership with the city of Bellevue. I think together, we make for a very strong and inclusive community that people want to live in. I think together, we make for a very strong and inclusive community that people want to live in. So thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. Can we do a photo op?
Sure.
All right. Okay, Ms. Carlson, what's our next item?
Our second item is another good news story. I'm honored to to share two awards with council for the city's innovation with digital government experience and the use of 5G. I'd like to introduce the folks at the table. So we have Sabra Schneider, Chief Information Officer, Cheryl Bowles, Digital Government Manager, both with the Information Technology Department, Franz Lowenhurst, Mobility Planning Solutions Manager, and Daniel Lai, I T S Manager with the Transportation Department. And I'd also like to acknowledge our partners from T-Mobile, who are in the audience, Dwayne Walker, Erin Rainey, Kirk Niebert. Now I'll hand it over to Sabra for a brief presentation on these two awards.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy.
Mayor and council. We are thrilled to be here tonight to continue the theme from our partners in the Bellevue School District on innovation and talk to you tonight about two awards that Bellevue was honored to receive in September. The first is an unconventional award from Bellevue-headquartered T-Mobile. And this award was given to us at the Mobile World Conference in Las Vegas. Thank you. In the end of September. And the community award that we received recognizes customers who are transforming industries through the use of innovative technology. The second award that we're here to talk about tonight is a Government Experience Award from the Center for Digital Government. Thank you. This annual award recognizes the achievement of states, cities, and counties that have raised the bar on government experience services to create a better-engaged constituency and a more responsive government. Both of these awards reflect work happening across the city. But the I T department and transportation departments are honored to be presenting these awards with you tonight. And I will turn it over to Franz to talk a little bit more about the unconventional award from T-Mobile.
Thank you, Sabra. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Daniel Lai and I had the privilege of representing the city at the unconventional award ceremony at the Mobile World Congress. These awards recognize companies and government entities that think differently and innovate boldly. And during our acceptance speech for the first place in community innovation, we recognized, of course, our technology partners, Dwayne Walker and Kirk Niebert, who are here today. But we also took a moment to acknowledge the city of Bellevue, our mayor, our council members, our leadership team, and for encouraging staff to and to encouraging staff to think boldly, to advance innovative road safety solutions that can have positive community impact, both in our community and beyond. And before Daniel speaks about the project specifically, I just wanted to pause and acknowledge Sabra Schneider, our Chief Information Officer, who nominated the Transportation Department for this award and for her steadfast commitment to our Vision Zero Road Safety work and our Smart Mobility Initiative. It's really a privilege to work with her, so thank you.
So a little bit about the project itself. It's a really unique project for us. It's an opportunity for the city to demonstrate leadership in applying technologies, working with our community partners to really manifest some of the safety initiatives that will really make a difference. And in this slide here, you can see some of the applications that we have. We're really leveraging the capabilities of 5G here to really protect vulnerable road users. We can alert drivers using an app, letting them know when there's an imminent risk in place. This helps people walking, cycling, rolling on the streets. And I think, you know, we have a series of four different applications. We've been launching quite a few of them already. And I think this is just the start of a lot more to come and a lot more celebrations to be had in this partnership.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Cheryl to talk more about the Government Experience Award.
Thank you. So the Government Experience Award is a national award open to all cities in the country, regardless of size. And Bellevue is incredibly honored to have placed third in the country in 2023. According to the Center for Digital Government, they focus on government experiences that have a human-centric approach to service delivery and incorporate digital equity, accessibility, and inclusion across all their interactions. Like the unconventional award, this was a one-city effort that highlighted work across many departments and achievements such as expanding the BellevueWa.gov chatbot, enabling accessibility advancements across our digital portfolio, creating the Inclusive Interactions booklet and its subsequent training, utilizing the engaging Bellevue website for resident outreach, and advancing data transparency with interactive dashboards.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the innovative vision from council and the support of all of these projects.
We are so proud of you. This is wonderful. Thank you. Let's get a picture with the awards. Would you take this one, please?
Certainly.
Ms. Carlson, did you have anything else to report?
That is the end of the manager's report.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have two study session items now. And as the deputy mayor said in the agenda approval, we are going to start with the mid-biennium budget update. So Ms. Carlson, I'll let you introduce.
Thank you, Mayor. The first study session topic is a second touch on the 2023-24 mid-biennium budget. And tonight, staff will provide an overview and highlights of the mid-biennium changes for council's consideration, including the operating and capital revenues and expenditures, as well as an update to the general fund forecast. This presentation is informational, and no direction is being asked of council tonight. Joining at the staff table are John Riesha, Director, and Evan Phillips, Budget Manager from the Finance and Asset Management Department. And with that, I will turn it over to John.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Tonight, we're really going to go through a high-level review of our look at the calendar and actions, a quick recap of what 2324 budget actually contained. We'll do an overview of what will be within the proposed mid-biennium adjustments, which are technical in nature. And then we'll do a review of the general fund forecast. So we'll hone in a bit on where the revenue looks like it's heading, and we'll be happy to answer questions. And with that.
Thank you, John. Just as a reminder, I did want to just walk the council through the next key dates. And as a reminder for the public, obviously, we were here last Monday night with this basically calendar preview. Tonight, we are here, as John mentioned, to go through the mid-biennium adjustments as well as the general fund forecast. Next Monday night, staff from Development Services will be providing an update for the 2024 fee schedule as well as the school impact fees that get passed through the city of Bellevue. On November 13th, we will be conducting a public hearing. And staff will provide follow-up to any council inquiries as well as ask council direction for adoption on November 20th. This is to meet King County's property tax deadlines, which is the end of November. So that is the time pressure, the time restraint on our calendar. So with that being said, the thing I wanted to start us off with before we jump into the mid-buy itself is to ground us in the 2324 adopted budget. So this graphic should look familiar to council. This is what we call the pinwheel chart that we that staff provided last fall. This is a visual representation of all of the critical investments that the city made in the 2324 budget, from public safety, including CCAP, body worn cameras, Fire Station 10, to everything in affordable housing, homelessness, D I B, environmental stewardship, among many others. This is just a, this is a large sample, but this is not inclusive of all investments that council made as part of the 2324 budget. So I did want to remind folks that as part of the mid-biennium, we are making mostly technical adjustments. But the mid-biennium is ensuring that these 2023-2024 adopted priorities are still executed and implemented. So that is the grounding for our mid-biennium discussion. So as we mentioned, the mid-biennium is technical. It is required by R C W, so it's required by Washington State law. And we provide some routine updates as part of that. But again, this is mostly technical to provide a a simple adjustment to the two-year biennium budget. So what do some of these mid-biennium adjustments include? So as I mentioned, this does continue the execution and implementation of the council priorities identified in the last graphic, really implementing and executing on the 2023-2024 adopted and amended budget. Another thing to mention is that while all of those investments on the pinwheel chart are expenditures, there were actions taken by council on the revenue side as well, including a B and O tax adjustment as well as a 2% property tax adjustment, 1% council manic, and 1% of use, 1% of bank capacity. As a reminder for council, the 2024 adopted budget does assume a 1% property tax adjustment. That would be council manic, and that is included as one of the several adoption actions that are tentatively scheduled for November 20th. As I mentioned, we do update the revenues as part of practice and policy for the revenues in the 2023 mid-buy. This includes everything from updating our sales taxes, B and O taxes, to some of our miscellaneous revenues. We kick over every rock and make sure that our revenues are updated across the entire city. We also do that with expenditures as well. We look at some of our personnel costs. As I'm sure many of us are aware, inflation is one of the big pressures that the city faces. And our year-over-year C P I adjustment, so we do a June-to-June period with 6.5%, and that impacts many, if not all, of our funds. This chart should also look familiar to you. We call this the the pennies chart. This is just a kind of a more simple explanation of our property tax structure and our property taxes generally. So this represents the average property owner's bill and what jurisdictions the property tax dollars go to. A $1 million property in the city of Bellevue will pay roughly $1,100 to the city of Bellevue. That is the 13% reflected in the second column from the left. 7% goes to other jurisdictions, including the Port of Seattle, among others. 19% goes to King County. And then 28% goes to our school districts, which we saw tonight do fantastic work, as well as to the state of Washington's education fund. So between the Bellevue School District and state of Washington, that's 61% of the property tax dollar going to our schools. For the 1% adjustment assumed in 2024, that 1% would equate to a $9 increase to a $1 million property in 2024. And I just want to point that out again. That is just a $9 adjustment to a $1 million property. So now to some of the details of what is in the mid-biennium specifically. But as a primer, I do want to mention, while I recognize that council understands what the general fund is for the public, the general fund pays for some of the major core services that many of us associate with government, our public safety, our firefighters, police officers, our parks, our planners. Many of the core functions of government get paid for from the general fund. So as I've been saying, we updated the revenues using our latest forecasts across all of our funds, but most remarkably, the general fund. We also handle a whole host of technical adjustments. Most of them are personnel in nature. So the city of Bellevue updates its medical and dental rates, or health insurance rates. We adjust pension rates as they are mandated and changed by the state, so the Department of Retirement Systems handles that information. We also adjust for collective bargaining agreements that have been adopted and ordained. So we make sure anything that has passed, any relevant personnel updates from the previous adopted budget are included as part of this mid-buy as well. We have also included some biennium funding for the Keep Bellevue Beautiful program as well as funding for a homelessness program support pilot and associated evaluation dollars with that effort as well. As far as some of our other funds, there is a C I P project, a new C I P project that is the Affordable Housing Permit Fee and Reduction Project. This will serve as a holding fund or a holding project for a, from a contribution from the general fund that will defray the costs and will handle refunds for affordable housing projects in the city of Bellevue. We also have our Hotel Motel Fund. There has been revenues as part of the T P A flowing into this fund this year. Immediately after this agenda item, staff will be coming forth to provide you with additional information about the spending plan and priorities and the work plan associated with the T P A. The mid-buy itself does not actually presuppose what that money will be spent on. The mid-biennium does, however, have to include appropriation for the revenues that are flowing in to balance the budget. So while we don't assume what the money will be spent on, staff has included that in there to make sure the revenues are accounted for in the budget. And finally, there is, within the utilities funds, a set aside for a rate subsidy and donation program as well. So this is the bulk of the mid-biennium changes. Again, most of them are technical in nature, mostly tied to personnel. But these are the other notable items that you'll see. And now we're moving on to the general fund forecast. And before I launch into that, I do want to acknowledge a lot of great work that has been done by staff throughout the process. Our staff has been working on the general fund forecast since back in March, and we have been iterating and iterating and iterating on this continually. And I really want to acknowledge staff from Development Services, Economic Development, and then two folks from the Budget Office, Kip Murray and Li Chong Shen. Li Chong is there, and Li Chong and Kip represent our economic analysis team. And they do a really fantastic job. So I want to acknowledge their good work this whole year in really challenging economic circumstances, because this has not been a normal period, and they've done really remarkable work. So that is worth acknowledging. So let's see their good work. So development is cooling after historic highs. So in 2022, the valuation of the city's permits that went through our, went through D S was $1.6 billion. And 20, sorry, that was 2021. 2022, it was $1.4 billion. And 2023, we're anticipating to be somewhere around $1.1 billion. This is well above the historical averages of approximately 800 million, so double in 2022 and almost double in 2021 and still more than double in 2022. So while our construction and development is cooling, it is cooling from very historic highs. So these are still very healthy development numbers. But it is important to say that there isn't much new coming into the pipeline. Many of the construction projects that are currently taking place are, were projects that were put into the pipeline before interest rates began to spike. So that's an important thing to recognize is while these numbers are healthy, looking into 2024 and 2025, the development forecast gets a little bit murkier and a little bit more unclear as there aren't as many new projects coming into the system. That being said, the other side of that coin is Bellevue's amenities continue to retain and attract businesses. The amenities of downtown Bellevue are continually to bring, continually bringing new business, additional growth. And that's a testament to the good investments that the city has made in attracting business. Another important thing to keep in mind is our economically sensitive revenues, most notably sales and B and O taxes, are projected to average 5% annual growth, which is back to historical averages. So that is also very healthy growth in those very sensitive revenues. So even though the economy is slowing a little bit here or there, we have pretty fast sales and B and O tax growth, and that is exceeding the county as well as the state, as is normally expected. And I did mention inflation before, and the table below on the screen does outline where we anticipate inflation to be over the next several years. We, as I said, 6.5% is where we were for 2023. But we do anticipate it to get back down to historical averages of somewhere between 1 and 3% by the end of the decade. This is a chart that, this is a lines-crossing chart that we so often talk about as staff. I do want to make a few important things to point out here. So as you could see, in 2023, we do have, the city has captured, is anticipating to capture more revenues than expenditures, which is a fantastic thing. But many of those, many of those revenues are one-time in nature and are not ongoing. So that's why you see the lines actually crossing in 2024 and then the lines further parting in 2025 and beyond. That is a symptom of what I think many of us know at this point as the property tax structural imbalance of not being able to increase property taxes above the 1% as mandated by state law. So that structural revenue issue is visualized here in that persistent gap. While even though we have substantial growth in our other tax, other tax streams, this is a persistent issue that we have to face. But what does that really look like? I really want to take a moment here to walk through the four scenarios that are before you. So these four scenarios outline a myriad of different factors, everything that staff has been talking to you about. So these four scenarios outline a myriad of different factors, all, everything that staff has been talking to you about over the last several months and this conversation tonight. Last fall, staff brought forward the optimistic and pessimistic scenarios on the left hand of your screen. And the main difference between the optimistic and pessimistic scenarios was the construction environment, as well as large employers being in downtown Bellevues, providing what we would call an incubator effect, where other businesses want to locate near other large businesses and having that be a multiplier effect for our downtown area. Unfortunately, in the current scenario to the right, so the second from the, second from the right, is our current forecast. So as you could see, comparing the current to the pessimistic, we are closer to the pessimistic than the optimistic. As you can see, in the near term, the current forecast does have the pessimistic, it's a little bit worse than the pessimistic. But if you look in the out-years in '27 and '28, the forecast is looking substantially better than it was in the pessimistic scenario. And a lot of that is due to the timing of construction and development. We are anticipating a much better end of the decade in our construction and development cycle than where we're looking at '25 and '26. And again, as I was mentioning, there is a bit of cooling in what is going into the development pipeline, and that's kind of percolating through the system and causing some more, some larger deficits in 2025. So that is where much of that comes from. This does account for large employers also decamping the area, but also accounts for large employers entering the area. So all of that is balanced out and considered as part of our current forecast. Also, for your consideration, staff has included what the forecast would look like with a 1% council manic adjustment in 2025 through 2028 to provide some context about what that would look like if council decided to continue with recent past practice in using the 1% council manic allowed by state law. So this is a lot of information to throw at you, and it's, may not be immediately clear what some of these deficits are really meaning in a dollars and cents, but also a programmatic, where are we headed? What does '25, '26 look like? So I'm going to hand the mic over to John, and we will go through what this really means.
Thank you, Evan. I appreciate that. I'm going to start with just a little bit of optimism. He gets to be the, the rough information. I get to be the good guy in this one somehow. It's an interesting perspective of having come into the city and done some really deep look at the implications and the financial model for the city. I want to start off with, actually, if you go back a slide, if you don't mind. If you will notice, on the current and on the with 1%, there's an interesting thing that's happening, and it's a combination of effects of both construction coming back, but it's also looking to the question of the decisions that this council made to diversify its revenue. You start to see a balancing of that. So I want to now go, go forward to talk a little bit about how we think about and manage structural deficits. We, as your professional staff, look very deeply and watch this on a regular basis. Our economists and our teams are watching the different figures to see what the implications are. When we think about these numbers, we think about how do we manage for this to make sure that we've got enough revenue in the right spaces? How do we make the right recommendations to you to consider for revenue balancing, to make sure we've got the right mix of revenues? And so we think about it from a perspective of targeting about 5% or less of what our general fund is. And so we're trying to make sure that we're within that range where we can balance those numbers, because it's a point of fact that because of state law, we're going to be dealing with these structural deficits. It's just the way the system works. And so as we hone in a little bit deeper at this particular image, which includes the general fund and fund balance and has across it our net structural deficit, let's hone in real quick. And as we hone in and look a little bit more tightly at what this means, we're starting to see that that bottom line that runs across the bottom is our structural deficit. And if we're thinking about that 5% mark that we're trying to manage within, keep ourselves from, from being beyond that space, that dotted line above it is that threshold. We, as staff, believe we can help manage to those points. And so the combination of the decisions that you have made, the economy that we have and the situation with our residents, as well as businesses being supportive of our tax structure, we're in a relatively positive position, even though we still have a structural deficit. We have the foundation and the grounding to be able to manage that appropriately and reasonably. What I also find very interesting is the point that I made at the beginning, which is it appears to be stabilizing. It's not growing at a faster rate, and it's not growing at that CPI rate. So we're seeing that starting to stabilize, and we have to keep our eyes on that and watch that piece, but this is what we're watching against. So this helps put a little context to how we think about that forecast and how we help look at those numbers to make sure that we've got the right mix. And as we're thinking about that distribution of revenues, this is how we're looking at that diversification. So we think about the different major structures. We've got property tax, we've got sales tax, business and occupancy tax, utility tax, and our miscellaneous revenues, which include interest income and grants and a variety of smaller taxes and such. But as we think about this, we're also thinking about the mix of volatility and stable. And so as we're looking at these revenue sources, our property tax and our utility tax are probably our two most stable revenues. Utility tax is diminishing relative to the overall size, just because we don't see that growing at our, at a CPI rate. But it's a relatively stable number. When we think about business and occupancy and sales tax, they're economically sensitive, which means that they're going to change by at least 1% in any given year based off of the economic conditions that surround them. And so that gives variability to how we plan on those expenses. So this is our ability to, we're watching that. The big changes that we saw in the last year reduced our relative share of the pie for property tax down to about 16% and increased the BNO tax to around 19%. That shift of a couple percent has helped stabilize some of those pieces. And so that's the effect of your decisions in the last year really allowed us to be in a pretty strong position and a diversified revenue position. So what does that also mean? This also is our foundation as we start our '25, '26 budget process and budget thinking. So we're thinking about that future, and we get to start by celebrating the city's legacy, a strong fiscal condition. That stewardship is amazing, that we get to come in as staff, and I, I get to come in, and it is in such a positive space relative to many communities around here within Washington and in fact, all over the US. So we're in a positive position there. We also have been listening and been learning, and we are going to take the opportunity over the next few months to look deeply at our policies, practices, code, and RCW to understand the effect on our finances. What are the different things that are driving the dollars to go in different directions to see if they are calibrated in the right way to actually achieve the outcomes that you are calling for us to achieve as, as a community? So as you're listening, we're trying to make sure that the policies line up. This is some of the things that we heard during the TBD discussion, and this is part of what we want to make sure that we're being responsive to you and to the community and doing that deep work. And so know that we're grounding that work in our economic forecast, and we'll be driving forward as we start our process to understand what you'll be looking to and what the community is looking to for the next biennium. And again, we just want to wrap up with, we're back to the, the key dates. We are again at the overview of the adjustments. Next week will be the Development Services Update. November 13th is our anticipated public hearing and any additional follow-up. And if all goes well, we are anticipating that it will be before you for potential adoption on November 20th.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? I thought I would start with the fiscal hawk, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I appreciate that, giving me that labor, which I hope proved the point that the city of Bellevue, our fiscal policy is probably one of the best. It's a lot of good information here, very relevant, you know. The only thing I am just thinking about is, how do we get the information? We need to show, you mentioned about what's going to happen in next year, 2024. And we predicted this 2023, '24 in our biennium budget last year. So we're on track, I assume, and I think, and we're going toward the next year. So we try to make the adjustment this year so we can fit our, you know, model. So I would like to know, I hope it's somewhere, which I, you know, probably need to look further or you help me. In 2023, how do we track what we, what we forecasted when we set our budget for 2023? Are we on track? Or are we doing better? Or are we doing worse? Then when we're setting the 2024 budget, we're trying to adjust it. So I'm trying to say it's based on what we've seen in 2023 on those areas that we're going to find what we have to do. Of course, there are other things that we added as well, you know, so all those things, if we can look at for 2024, it might help us, for me anyway, say, hey, we are missing there. We need to do more in 2024. While we're doing much better in 2023, maybe we can tweak it somewhere that we need more and make the thing fit. So at the end of the day, we know what we need for 2024. Is this, does that make sense? Do you understand what I'm talking about?
It does, Councilmember. Let me try and take a stab at that, and Evan can back me up and, and if I get off track. Generally speaking, our revenues are on track in the aggregate for what we anticipated. There's a couple of revenues that are some a little bit higher, some are a little bit lower, but if you look at them in the aggregate, we actually didn't miss the mark by very much. Our economic team, and, and this is one of those points where I've been incredibly impressed with the team that we have. We're right on track with what we anticipated, and so we truly have just technical adjustments. There's no programmatic adjustments that need to be made because revenue's off-kilter in some fashion. In its aggregate, it looks like we're pretty close to what we anticipated, which is why when we showed the optimistic and pessimistic scenarios, we're falling right between them. And it's not too far off of where we anticipated that we were going to be.
Okay. So the adjustment we're going to be presented with to make by the council would be either minimal or almost none?
Truly technical in nature.
Okay. If you have some, it would be new programs we may have instituted in the, in the meantime, after we did the budget.
By way of example, as we have-
We have a new program, we need to have more money, or somehow, or we are getting new grants from someplace, like state housing fund, right? And so that would be all reflected in our 2024 budget conversation. Okay, and we have all that information between now and when we approve the budget.
Correct. And for that, there is an attach, there's an attachment A attached to tonight's materials, and that outlines by fund the changes, and there is a column for council adjustments, and that reflects the actions that the council took on the last time since the adoption.
Thank you. It's very clear to me. I appreciate that. If you have any questions, put it down there. I will be asking you. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Zhang.
Yes, thank you. It's very helpful to get this information about the forecast and, and where we fit. And it's good to know that even amongst the unpredictability that we're falling between the pessimistic and optimistic. I had a question, though. On page 12, you had the two graphs of expenditures and, and revenues. So I wanted to make sure I understood, both of these lines are forecasts, so this is not a measurement of the actual so far in 2023 against, on the, I guess, both revenues and expense side. And then when we look at the optimistic versus pessimistic, when the lines are going out beyond the 2024, what versions are we using to measure? Because I'm trying to get a, a sense for when those lines cross and, and what assumptions are being made.
I, I could answer that. So with 2023, what is being reflected in slide 12 does actually reflect projected expenditures and revenues. So as mentioned, largely, we are tracking with revenues. We are, we did see some significant one-time revenues come in that are not ongoing, but those are, so that's why we are above expenditures, because, but that is where the lines cross in 2024, is that one, those one-time revenues aren't realized in 2024. As to your second question about slide 13, in each of those scenarios, both the optimistic and pessimistic, what you're seeing here is all of those negatives reflect that the lines have crossed. So in '23, '24, council adopted a balanced budget as required by state law for both '23 and 2024. So when this information was presented by staff, it was showing '23 and '24 balanced, with '25 being the first year where the lines cross and the city goes into a deficit position.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question was, you talked about, I think there was the pie chart, right, that had the, the mix of percentages, page 16. So what I hear you saying is that because the revenues and expenses are largely similar, we see only technical tweaks, and you did bring up briefly the Transportation Benefit District. So I want to make sure I was listening properly. We are not anticipating having that discussion about the need for any Transportation Benefit District, and therefore, in this mid-buy conversation, we are not going to be talking about it. It's not something that is, is necessary in terms of making sure that our budget is balanced. Is that correct?
Transportation Benefit District is not a conversation or something that is considered from the staff perspective in the mid-biennium budget. My only reference to it was as we were thinking about the next year, we listened to you and to the community and the things that they wanted us to look, listen, look at and investigate during the, this off-period. And so we're going to be doing that work based off of what we heard. But this does not make any assumptions of any Transportation Benefit District revenue whatsoever, nor are there any actions in your budget documents that would take you to Transportation Benefit District.
Correct. And to follow on with that, the, all of the forecasts that the staff provides do not assume any policy decision other than the ones that council has already made. So in the out-years, the deficits do not assume any corrective action by council.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor, followed by Councilmember Barxdale.
Great report this evening. Thank you so much, both of you. For a very clear, clear and concise update on, on, on where we have or where we are, and really appreciate the comments and questions by my colleagues on this as well. I just had two questions. One, you know, since I've been on this council, we've known that approximately 2024, 2025, those lines would cross. So, and absolutely, we're, we're, we're hamstrung by where we are, and, and we're limited. I said that, and, and John, I think I heard you in terms of calibrating and looking for other, other resources and other streams of revenue, et cetera. I mean, when, so once we're done with this process, is that when you're going to dive into that? And then when is council going to have an opportunity to really look hard at that in terms of how do we make this, you know, this delta up? And what other possibilities do we have? What other revenue sources do we need to look at to, to, to make, to make this up? So that's my first question. Second question is actually along the TBD. I, I, I don't know if this is something we could even consider, because as you mentioned, these are just technical updates, but, but we did make some cuts to transportation maintenance during this process right here, and that's why we're talking about this TBD. Have we generated enough revenue that this year we could still move forward with some maintenance? that transportation is looking for and asking for? You know, just as we've found funding for the, you know, keep Bellevue beautiful programs, et cetera. Is there so many available that we could put towards maintenance?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Let me take the first question first. The how and when. So we as staff have started our work to try and get a good understanding of what the environment is. And are looking pretty deeply at our policies and working within our staff leadership team to understand those revenues and think about the choices that will be before us. Where you will start your work as the council will be as part of your retreat next year. So as early as potentially January, we'll be in a position where you'll start your 25, 26 budget process. And we will be listening and be, it'll be a very important part of it as we think about how to calibrate what policies or what practices and what choices might be before you as we start to get that. And so there will be touchpoints, we think, throughout the year that you will be guiding us through that process. But it starts as early as January. It's not going to start in September. When a budget gets transmitted over, it will actually start much sooner than that. As to the maintenance question, could, we have, as staff, we haven't looked at making a different decision to add that revenue in. Could we look and start to try and evaluate that? That is always a possibility. At the same time, the transportation department is also looking at what are the true effects as we look at 2024 and the impacts of that. And looking at as part of this greater revenue strategy, look at, are the revenues lined up? Are they going to the right spaces? Are they lined up to maintenance and to operating it to capital in the right way? And do they have the right set of level of service? And so there's a lot of work that we're using this opportunity to do a check and adjust. So we're taking this time to do the work that we need to do throughout this process. There is the question of the additional dollars. If we're, if you're asking us to go back and take a look and see what it would take to accomplish that, we could take a look at that. We'd have to articulate and understand what we'd have to move around to make that as a possibility and what its effect would be on the deficits. This year has not been built into that, into that conversation.
Okay, well, I'm just one of seven council members. But if we did have the time and the ability to do that before, was it November 20th? Before we wanted, I personally would appreciate if we could, if we could take a look at that, if that was a possibility.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barxdale.
Thank you for the presentation. Given that this is a structural problem, I guess a couple of questions. One, do you feel like this is something we as a city can address? And then as you're thinking about scenarios? And then two, as we're putting together our legislative agenda, is there anything that we might include in that to help address the structural problem?
Thank you for that, Councilmember. Well, we as a city can continue to add different kinds and diversify the revenue base as has been done as we've looked deeply as a city at some different kinds of choices. Ultimately, we don't believe that we can address the problem as a city. It is a function of state law. So our RCWs set up that. And it was an action of the state that put us into this condition. And so it would take an action of the state to change that. And then if the state were to look at some of those questions of the 1% or the overall cap on property taxes, you then might have tools available to you to make that policy decision as to whether you want to do something different. I'm not advocating one way or the other. But right now, state law is the limitation for you being able to have the discussion without a vote of the people on how you address the normal cost CPI adjustments.
I guess I would just say, I think it'd be interesting to have a discussion at some point about some ideas that could go into our legislative agenda then, maybe, as a council?
That's something I would advise you to talk to Genesee with. We can collaborate and then bring it back to council.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Well, I think this has been a really good discussion. And it's, I think the issues have been kind of laid out on this. I'm just curious, a couple of things. And I agree with the deputy mayor is talking about the maintenance piece and how we can look at that. We do have options on that, but I think that's important. Because the more we kind of ignore it, the worse it gets in a sense. And we've gone through that before where things look pretty cruddy and so we don't, and things aren't going right. So that's just something we need to address. And that'll be good. I think everybody's touched on really good points on this. And it sounds like we're in a place for this time period. We're just looking at now and 24. But obviously, we're going to have to do something after 24. And that's, and you set that up very well. So I think that's, that's very important. What I found interesting is, and I'd like to, just as a comment to the side, is we need to get this word out to the public to understand where the revenue is. Because I think people think that their property tax pays for everything. And it's kind of, it's very interesting to see how little that part is, and it's very vital. I think that'd help a lot. The other thing is the question, you raised the question of the 1% tax now. And is it possible, are you anticipating maybe bringing that forward or suggesting that? As the charts that you have shows that that would actually tee this up a lot better if we could do that for the next year?
So, Councilmember, thank you for that. Our financial plan and our budget assumes the policy direction that you provided during the 23, 24 budget process, which includes the 1% adjustment for 2024. We cannot presume beyond that. And that is, we've, that's why we've developed the side scenario that said, here's what it would look like if you continued the current practice of making that adjustment. But our current financial plan is predicated on that policy decision that you previously made that will be before you as part of your decisions on November 20th, on or around November 20th.
Well, that's what I wanted to hear, that is really crucial. And it is an amazingly small amount comparatively when you look at, you know, the taxpayers on that. It's something that we need to have more conversation about that. So people understand that if we want to keep these things going, it's not that. It's always, it always hurts when you have to pay taxes, but. And I think, to me, I think this has been one of the best laying out the whole piece and how we work on it, I've seen. And it sounds like we're in a relatively, relatively good place. And we're facing coming up in 24 and moving forward, some real interesting decisions. But if we go, if we're, what you're basically saying is we go the plans you've laid out before us, we'll be in relatively good shape at this point. So in 2024 and 25, we'll be in a position then, instead of having to get ourselves, dig ourselves out of a hole, we're in a kind of a status quo. But it means that you've really laid it out, we need to do something in the future. So that's something that's a challenge. And I think you and the staff will have some really good ideas about how to do that. But it's good to have that in front of us, to know what we have to deal with. And I appreciate that very much. And appreciate all the comments. I think we've all, all putting them all together. It's very positive in terms of where we're going. Well, thank you.
So I have kind of a remedial question. I'm always prided Bellevue of having low property tax rate comparatively. But as we increase that 1% every year, does that straight math, does that mean our rate goes up 1% every year?
Technically, no. So the way Washington State property tax works, and we've set out a very complex system to articulate. So I don't think it's a remedial question. I think it's a question that most taxpayers have. The way we do this is we set the property tax amount that we need, and that goes up by 1%. The rate actually more times than not actually goes down because of the assessed value of all the property in the city of value. Bellevue keeps going up and up and up beyond 1%. So our rate has consistently gone down. There have been exceptions with the new parks levy. That would be an exception where the rate is voted on by the voters and it goes up. But the rate is just a function. We really are just increasing the 1% of the levied amount that we are asking for from our property owners.
And I'm going back, Mayor, to the Penny's slide. If we're also thinking about this, we're also only affecting that 13% slice. So our 1% isn't 1% of your total tax bill. It's only on 13% of your tax bill. So it's a small, 1% on a small portion of your overall.
Perfect. All right, thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Okay. A short one. Very short.
Thank you. This is revenue we're talking about. That includes CIP and general fund. Do we uncover any reserve that we have money that we can consider as revenue? Where is that money? How much is that money?
So, I don't have the number off the top of my head. But we carry our reserves into our financial policies. And ending fund balance starts off in the next year as beginning fund balance. And so we factored that into our financial plan. So when you make your budget decisions for each biennium, you're factoring that in. And those dollars are part of that equation. But those are also only one-time monies, not ongoing. And so they're not the kind of thing that you would build staff or programs off of. But they're opportunities for one-time investments. And each one of those budget cycles at the, at that, the regular biennial budget cycle is when you would begin to address that.
So we will know that because it affects our revenue, right? So we will know when you tell us what it is.
Correct.
Hopefully soon. Thank you.
But not the mid-buy. It's at the regular biennial. So we're, we have some time before we address that. Okay, great, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Carlson, what's our next study session item?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. The last study session item is a recommended budget and work plan for the Bellevue-Redmond Tourism Promotion Area. Earlier this year, council approved an ordinance establishing the Bellevue-Redmond Tourism Promotion Advisory Board. And the board met, first met in August and began developing their work plan and budget, which will be outlined in the presentation to council tonight. After the presentation, staff is seeking council direction to include legislation in the 2023, 24 mid-biennial adjustments to support the expenditures consistent with the annual budget and strategic plan that's recommended by the advisory board. Joining at the staff table are Caroline DeMarcarian, the Chair of the Bellevue-Redmond Tourism Promotion Area Advisory Board, Lori Hoffman, Arts Manager, and Liz Floris, Cultural Tourism Specialist from the Community Development Department. And I will turn it over to Lori.
Thank you so much, Deputy Manager. And thank you, council, for having us here tonight. Again, my name is Lori Hoffman, I'm an arts manager here for the city of Bellevue. I've been very excited to be working on the TPA project this last year as we've gotten it through the various steps that we've needed. And I'm so excited to be introducing you tonight to Liz Floris, our new cultural tourism specialist here at the city. She's been with us now for almost a month and a half, two months. So we hit the ground running with her. She got going and did three TPA meeting, board meetings right on the road. And our Chair for the TPA Advisory Board, Caroline DeMarcarian, who is the General Manager of our Seattle Bellevue Marriott right down the road here. So thank you for having us tonight. And with that, I'll hand it over to Liz.
Good evening. After this presentation, we will request council to please direct staff to return with legislation as part of the 23, 24 mid-biennium adjustments to support expenditures consistent with the annual budget and strategic plan as recommended by the BRTPA Advisory Board. With that, I will hand over the presentation to the TPA Advisory Board's Chair, Caroline DeMarcarian.
Thank you, Lisa. Well, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, and good evening, councilmembers. This presentation will cover the background of the Bellevue-Redmond Tourism Promotion Area Budget and Work Plan, information on the collection and remittance of fees, some background on the allowable use of revenues, and finally, the overview of the annual budget and work plan. The, as a refresher, the BRTPA was approved by Bellevue City Council earlier this year, and lodging businesses began charging the nightly fee in July. Increased tourist benefits our entire community because overnight visitors spend an average of up to 2.5 times the price of their hotel in the community, in local restaurants, small businesses, attractions, and nightlife. It should be noted that funds will promote our cities as a destination, not specific hotels. Overnight visitors have many options to choose from, whether they come and stay in our hotels, boutique BMBs, or drive in and stay in their RVs as part of a road trip. I just listened to the previous, the previous presentation. And I was saying, the more visitors we have, the more we can have people come and spend money here. That should increase our sales tax. So it's all about increasing more visitors to our city, too. So that could help a little bit with the finances. Bellevue's inter-local agreement with the city of Redmond calls for the creation of an advisory board to recommend to council an annual budget and strategic plan for the use of TPA funds. Tonight's presentation includes the advisory board's recommended budget and strategic plan. Here you find the current members of the BRPTA Advisory Board representatives of their communities. Both cities are to be represented equally on the advisory board. There are four spaces for Redmond stakeholders and four for Bellevue stakeholders. The BRPTA Advisory Board, which began meeting in August of this year, has recommended a 16-month budget and work plan for 2023, 2024 TPA revenues. This work plan and budget covers a 16-month period through December 2024 because fund collection began mid-year this year. Future work plans and budgets will cover a 12-month calendar year period and will be brought to council by July of each year in order to align with the annual budget process. Once the recommended budget and work plan are approved, contracting for daily administration of the TPA will begin, which means we can put the revenues to work. Logic charges are currently being collected by lodging businesses and submitted to the Washington Department of Revenue, which remits them to the city of Bellevue as the legislative authority of the BRPTA. Revenues are maintained separately from general funds. The city of Bellevue also maintains separate accounts for revenues from each zone. Revenue collection, collected within the city of Redmond will be used for tourist promotion of Redmond. And revenue collected within the city of Bellevue will be used for tourist promotion of Bellevue. Work plans for both zones adhere to allowable uses and follow the same format. The amounts allotted to each area of focus or bucket differ because of the varying needs of each zone. Please note that the full budget and work plan have been provided as an attachment. So how will the revenues be used? The inter-local agreement states that revenues must be used for tourism promotion, defined in short as activities designed to increase tourist and convention business. Both zones' budgets adhere to allowable uses of revenue. For example, some examples of the programs that could be funded by TPA funds are destination marketing and communication, making our cities world-class destinations, including an upcoming international campaign to visitors from Japan. Public relations, promoting a vibrant image of our cities to the world. Visitor experience such as bellhop, electric shuttle, which you can see in the image on the screen, moving people around downtown Bellevue for free. Advanced research to further understand visitation and to plan for the future. Festivals and events such as the Northwest Chocolate Festival. Destination sales that attract convention and meeting business to both the Maiden Bar Center and other area event space.
Here in Bellevue, all of those activities are designed to, are designed to deliver these overall high-level goals for TPA funds. You can see that by aiming to increase our citywide hotel occupancy from 60 to 72%, we can expect to see overnight visitors increase from 1.8 to 2.4 million visitors, which results in an additional 400 million plus in local economic impact. That is more dollars for our restaurants, retailers, nightlife, and small businesses. Taking a closer look at marketing and communications, which is the largest budget item for the city of Bellevue, the plan includes additional investment in paid marketing, which currently has a 66 to 1 return on ad spend. It also increases focus on social media posts and content. It also increases focus on social media posts and content, public relations, and, excitingly, our first forays into international marketing. All of this aims to increase ad impressions, engagement, and clicks through to both booking locations and to the Visit Bellevue website, which serves as a critical tourism hub. On the next slide, you'll see an overview of the annual budgets. And in your packet, you can find a deep level of data on each budget item.
So here on this slide, you see the annual budget's area of focus or buckets. Again, the differing amounts allotted to each bucket reflect the individual needs and priorities for the individual zones. Those numbers are a projection and our maximum amount through December 2024. Any additional revenue generated will go into reserves. Bellevue's destination marketing organization, Visit Bellevue, currently has a robust strategic plan in place called the Destination Development Plan. For the Bellevue Zone, the BRTPA Advisory Board chose to put TPA funds to work immediately with Visit Bellevue. This plan allows for quick implementation of TPA funds on current allowable objectives that are ready to deliver results in the community. For example, within the tourist development, having an interactive kiosk, which would give visitors realtime information on dining, attractions, shopping, events, and nightlife in Bellevue. For the Redmond Zone, One Redmond has modest investment in destination sales, including marketing and communications and tourist development, while focusing more directly on administration and research, particularly towards the development of a robust strategic plan. This will allow, for example, for the procurement and contracting of relevant data collection tools. Considering the current need for research and planning, the majority of TPA fees from the Redmond Zone will be held in reserve for future allocation. Reserve will be held in the respective zone accounts with the city of Bellevue as legislative authority and can be used in future budget recommendations. Moving forward, the BRTPA will follow an annual process. The TPA Advisory Board will meet at least quarterly and will work with Bellevue city staff to develop an annual budget and work plan, which will then be recommended to Bellevue City Council, as we are doing today. Once Bellevue City Council approves the annual budget and work plan, staff will develop an annual written report of that budget and work plan for our partner city, the city of Redmond. Throughout the year, Visit Bellevue and One Redmond, who will be handling day-to-day administration of the TPA, will provide regular reports to the advisory board, informing them of projects, metrics, and other relevant information. With these regular reports, the advisory board will work with city staff to begin the cycle again each year, creating and updating an annual budget and work plan to recommend to Bellevue City Council. So we ask that council move to direct staff to return with legislation as part of the 2023-2024 mid-biennium, I can't say the word, biennium, adjustment to support expenditures consistent with the annual budget and strategic plan as recommended by the BRTPA Advisory Board. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Let's start with a motion, Deputy Mayor.
Senator Mayor, I wish your staff to return with legislation as part of the 2023-2024 mid-biennial adjustments to support expenditures consistent with the annual budget and strategic plan as recommended by the BRTPA Advisory Board.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions? Councilmember Rexdale.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I'm really excited about additional nightlife coming to Bellevue. A few questions. So for the festivals and events, is that going to be funded through, is that going to be in partnership with local nonprofits? And will that be money be available, accessible through grants? Or how is that, what's the plan there?
Yeah, excellent question. It's a competitive grant process, and the application is ongoing, so folks can apply at any point. So unlike some grants where there's one time a year and you have to hit it or not, this one is a rolling application. A good example is our Tasveer Film Festival. As they were looking to come and expand, they already are in Bellevue. As they look to expand, could those funds be applied to expand that festival, drive additional hotel room stays? It is hotel room stay-driven, so the amount of funding you get from that festival and event incubator is really tied to the amount of hotel rooms that you will probably be blocking or visitors who will be coming and staying, or playing stakeholders.
Okay, so probably like more multi-day events than...
Yeah, and it does have a preference for things on shoulder seasons. So the times where we perhaps don't have as many visitors coming in already.
All right. Two last ones, I'll just ask them, and then have you. Does this, would this fund festival streets by chance? Given that it's kind of a marketing, like an indication of like, here's where festivals happen in the city. And then my last one is, when looking at the budget, so I support this, by the way. I mean, this is just a question for maybe moving forward. The majority of funds are in marketing and communication. I mean, I guess I'm thinking festivals and events are probably what's going to drive more of the tourism. I understand that awareness. Can you talk a little bit about how most of the funding went to marcom versus festivals and events, for example, which would draw people?
So a lot of this simply getting our branding out. So festivals and events, when people come here and then they have something to do, excellent. But first, we've got to get them to know that we're here. So we are competing nationally and globally for those visitor eyeballs. And some of that is just getting our brand out right now as we're diving into this work. Every year, when we take a look at this budget, there is a chance to adjust those buckets and where funding is going, depending on our needs in that year.
Thank you. And festival streets, but maybe, okay.
Okay, we have another marketing expert here on the dais, Deputy Mayor.
Lori, thank you. Liz, welcome.
Thank you.
Yes. And Caroline, welcome as well. Thank you for being here. One small request is, can we take Seattle out of the Marriott? Just make it the Bellevue Marriott versus Seattle Bellevue Marriott?
I'll bubble it up for sure.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Don't worry, I won't hold you to it. But it's always funny when I see that. Anyways, so Redmond's taking a different approach in terms of, they want to do more research before they start using those, primarily, it looks like, marcom funds. So why do we feel that's not the appropriate approach for us? And we're going to get right into the spending of the over $1 million?
I'm going to jump right in. Luckily, in Bellevue, we have a strong destination management organization in Visit Bellevue. And they have spent many years developing their current destination development plan. That plan is a ready-made strategic plan, and a lot of it was built with eventual hope for a TPA. So when these TPA did get passed, that plan was there and ready with the expanded capacity. Council will have opportunity to give feedback on that destination development plan as they look to refresh it in the coming year. But we are really lucky in that the plan was there. It was ready to go. Redmond is taking that different approach to make that plan.
So in other words, this is just kind of an extension of the work that Visit Bellevue is already doing then?
To some extent. There are some programs also that they didn't have funding. They were in the plan as hopefuls.
Yep.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. And then, and I completely agree that, you know, having the board is really going to zero in on some of the tactics and focus, et cetera, as they should do. But I'm just curious if there is a specific focus that you're looking at right now to zero in on in terms of Bellevue? And then in terms of how going to approach, as Councilmember Rexdale said, the festivals, et cetera? Just looking for a little bit more information there, if you have it. I know it's very early, and I just started in August. But I'm just curious about what the focus, and I appreciate the inclusion of the goals on here as part of this, because it looks like a large, by a large measure, it'll be brand awareness, but also hotel nights, which are totally legitimate. But I'm just curious a little bit more on what the focus, some of the key focus will be to drive those two goals. And focus meaning, what is it specifically about Bellevue?
They did, they got it in the council.
I think the Visit Bellevue has done a really great job. And I think you received this document that highlights under each of the different buckets, where is the focus in each? So each one of them has a robust plan that we have reviewed that is an advisory board with Visit Bellevue and that we approved, that it made sense for the city. It's an evolving thing, but this is a great start with the high-level goals where we would like to achieve.
Okay, good. Okay, so again, it sounds like following the path of Visit. Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you. This, I think is really, really exciting on this. This is a, this is a great partnership that takes us into a higher level of tourism, arts, and entertainment. And as you said, Lori, this is something that Bellevue's been working on for a long time. And we're working with Redmond, has, you know, Redmond's advancing quickly. They're in a different phase. And I think it's, it will add to what we're doing, but also it's good to be working with them. So we're going to have a lot more regional entertainment and tourists coming in here. And that doesn't mean they all have to come to Bellevue. They'll all have to come to Redmond. They can go to both. In fact, it's just going to enhance the viability and the people wanting to come to this area. So I think that it's really brilliant. You know, the, one of the things I think is exciting is that we can tie in, I just had a question, how can we tie BDA into this, too, with their, with the work they do as part of this entertainment and part of, and a lot of things they put on other organizations as well? We have a lot of organizations that are, and some that are struggling to get participation. So this gives us an opportunity in terms of attracting people and having things for them to raise that whole thing. So I see it as something that's really going to transform, in a sense, our, the way people look at Bellevue and the area and the opportunities we have for them. And that means we can hit all these goals. So it's really great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I really, I like the setup, too. We have a lot of ways you could put it together. And it sounds to me like we have a very good way to work with the, with the board and the organs, you know, the cities and the groups. And it sounds like it's going to be a very, very, very success. And I'm thoroughly behind it. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair of the Advisory Board.
Thank you.
Appreciate your volunteering, helping. My question is regarding detail. You know, I always say that devil is the detail because our Visit Bellevue Maiden Bar Center has done a lot of work for over the many years, doing a lot of, you know, tourist attraction. And so I want to know, what are we recommending? What will we be doing? Is already happening that we are going to do more? Or maybe do better? Or what are the things that we are actually doing brand-new? So there are two sections of that. So the question is specifically, and a couple of them I just want to touch upon, is that we'll be doing branding for a long time. So I want to know what are we going to do in branding? Are we going to create new branding? Or are we going to work with, you know, Maiden Bar, the Visit Bellevue, you know, group that's working on it? And so, and that includes, of course, global marketing, right? That's important. The Deputy Mayor said, there are a lot of details. So we don't want to duplicate what they're doing. That's why I want to know also, what, how do we partnership, partnering with the Visit Bellevue people, you know? Are we working together? While we doing different things, in different directions? So the other thing is, we need to make sure that we include local ethnic arts and culture because I've seen what Visit Bellevue, you know, that they have done. Oftentimes, the Convention Center effort doesn't really include too much of the ethnic, you know, organizations and communities. There can be a big help as part of the global outreach we're talking about in terms of, you know, languages, so on. So if you can give us, I assume some might be already included in your detailed, you know, plan, but we haven't had a chance to look at it. Then we, after we look at it, we may have some questions. So I'd like to have some of the detail. I think the process is good, but we want to make sure they are effective, they're not duplicative, and they are working together. And what are they? And I like your goal, that's good. But we just want to make sure that we're doing, you know, the effective, efficient way. If you can say a few words, that'd be good.
Thank you so much.
Otherwise, we can wait.
Oh, sorry. Thank you so much, council member.
Thank you.
So to your first point about making sure things are not duplicative, duplicative, we will actually be contracting with Visit Bellevue to do day-to-day administration of the TPA. So city staff will not be running programs counter to Visit Bellevue. We will be working directly with them, and they will be running day-to-day operations. In terms of how much is new and how much is like an expansion, I'm not sure where the exact line is, but it is a combination of the two. So things like our general marketing, that is something that is out and working, but we'll be expanding the markets in which we are marketing. We'll be moving into new national markets as well as new international markets. So those, that's a new way to do something that we are currently doing. Within discrete programs, there's things that are brand-new, like the kiosks that will be at the hotel concierge desks, where you can scroll through as a visitor to see the festivals and events, the incredible multicultural offerings that we have in our community. That's a brand-new program. That'll have to be stood up within next year. But then there's things like Bellhop, where you're seeing the pilot right now, but it is just that, it is a pilot. And the TPA funds are how we can translate that into something that is more longstanding and something that is moving forward continuously in our community. So it's a bit of a mix in terms of what's new and what is expanding. In terms of promoting our incredible multicultural offerings, not only will there be the kiosks, but Visit Bellevue does have a multicultural tourism committee that looks specifically at how to promote those organizations and how to grow them. One of the things that I think, if we had Tim Carr here for the Convention Center, he'll tell you that that theater is full 52 weeks a year. And the vast majority of those performances are very culturally specific. They are often in language that is not English, and they are sold out. We have incredible, robust multicultural offerings here, and they are full. Our key and our challenge now will be how to increase the capacity for them so that more of our visitors can attend. I hope I got them all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zion.
Yes, thank you. I am so, so excited that we have this plan and we're rolling out the funds underway. Because I agree with you that I was on the Bellevue Convention Center Authority for a couple of years during COVID, so not as much was going on. And I know that with Brad Jones, they've been planning for this for several years with Visit Bellevue. So I'm just really excited that we're, we are fully launching. I do see that, you know, Redmond has over half a million dollars in reserve, and we are not keeping reserve. We are sending the money out to do the marketing and communications. So super excited about that because what I remember hearing is we're competing with many other cities that have had a TPA for quite some time. So sending these funds out is actually going to help us make, be more competitive. So love the kiosks. I hope that Bellhop actually moves forward from just a pilot till the end of the year because I see the thing driving all over the city when I'm out in the city. And I think it's a very valuable thing. Love the fact that we're focusing on international marketing because as we are more and more of a multicultural city, it seems like, as my colleagues have said, there's a lot of offerings locally that we might be able to create that draw from international tourism. So focusing on that. I'm looking at this photo and thinking, oh, we could have put the one from Bellevue because Downtown Park had our own Holly Festival last year. And so more and more of how we lift up the kind of gifts and talents that we have in our community. I don't know if some of this could even tie into the cross-cultural programming efforts that we're working on, that as we activate more spaces, is that potentially also a tourism draw for us in addition to the Chocolate Festival and the Rock and Roll the year before? And then really appreciate seeing that the weekend hotel nights is a separate goal because I remember when I was on BCCA that that was an opportunity where there's lots of room nights. So if we could figure out how to amp up even more. My only question, and probably because I haven't read the Destination Development Plan in a while, is it would be really fun to do some themes. You know, Dr. Arumaki was here earlier and talking about the school district and the focus on cultivating joy. So, you know, are there some themes that we can have in our city, whether it's cultivating joy, culinary pieces? whether it's cultivating joy, culinary pieces, you know, ecotourism? I really like all the things that Visit Bellevue has been doing. And I'm just going to say, step on the gas and let's move even faster. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think everybody's said what I was going to say. I'm just feeling really fortunate that we have a team of people that had already put together a plan that we just needed funding to enact, and we hit the ground running. So thank you so much for your good work, and thank you for being here with us tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Thank you so much.
We're going to take a mo- a vote before we end here. We have a motion on the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. And I think that brings us to the end of our meeting, so we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too.